Dear Father, we love you and we just admit together as a body we desperately need you and we need your wisdom for our city and for all of our families. And we just beg in your mighty name that you would guide us. I pray that you'd guide this meeting today. I pray, Father, that you'd build a hedge of protection around our city. We know that you are the sovereign protector and the sovereign provider. So, God, we just, we beg for help for the good of your name and for the joy of our people. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Brother Gary. Always good to have you here. Looking to see if there's anybody from the VFW here. Anyone from VFW here?
I got you. I got you.
James, will you lead the pledge?
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Now, we have two proclamations that we had on the agenda today. And Ramona, you want to start with the first one?
We're going to reconvene at 6:00 PM this afternoon to do that proclamation regarding the West Memphis Blue Devil basketball team.
And that's at 6:00 o'clock this afternoon?
Yes.
The next one we have is on the World Day of Prayer. Wayne?
Yes, sir. The City of West Memphis proclamation up by the Honorable William H. Johnson, Mayor, whereas the National Day of Prayer has a significance for us as a nation and whereas since the first call of the prayer in 1775, when the Continental Congress asked the College to pray for wisdom in forming a nation, the call for prayer has been continued through our history, including President Abraham's Lincoln's 1863 proclamation of the Day of Humiliation, Fasting, and Prayer, and whereas in 1952, Joint Resolution 382 was passed by the United States Congress and President Harry S. Truman later signed Public Law 82-324, declaring an annual National Day of Prayer, and whereas in 1988, President Ronald Reagan signed Public Law 100-30, permanently setting the day as the first Thursday of May, and whereas the National Day of Prayer is an annual day that significant, significance of the observation of the passage of the bill establishing that prayer is as important to our nation today as it was in the beginning, and whereas the first Thursday of May is designated by the United States Congress when people are asked to turn to God in prayer and meditation. Now, therefore, I, William H. Johnson, Mayor of the City of West Memphis, Arkansas, do hereby recognize May the 3rd, 2018, as National Day of Prayer and urge all citizens of West Memphis to give special recognition to the National Day of Prayer. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Wayne. I believe that concludes our special items. I call this meeting to order and I ask the clerk to call the robe.
Yes, Sir. Mayor Johnson.
Here.
City Attorney Stevenson.
Here.
City Treasurer Martin.
Here.
Councilor Hutchinson.
Here.
Councilor Robinson.
Present.
Councilor Cat.
Here.
Councilor Pulliam.
Here.
Councilor Taylor.
Here.
Councilor Harris.
Here.
Councilor McLendon.
Present.
Councilor Mundy.
Here.
Councilor Holt.
Here.
And Councilor Crum.
Here.
A full house.
Coram President, we will proceed with our meeting. The next item on the business were the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections?
Motion to approve as submitted.
Second. All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they are approved as submitted. There were no items of old business brought forward. We'll move on into our new business. We have six ordinances to start off with.
I make a motion that 01 through 6 be read by title only.
Second.
Motion and second read title only. All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Mike, you can thank him and read the title.
I thank him every time we are in here and I thank him again today.
An ordinance to amend Section 8.04.183 of the West Memphis Municipal Code regarding failure to remove debris and for other purposes.
That concludes the first reading. We'll have it on our next meeting, regular scheduled meeting. Would you read 02?
An ordinance to amend Section 8.04.080 of the West Memphis Municipal Code regarding litter and for other purposes.
Would you read the title to 04?
An ordinance to amend Chapter 6.20 of the West Memphis Municipal Code to add a penalty provision section regarding weeds, garbage, and stagnant water and for other purposes.
Would you read the title to 05?
An ordinance to amend Chapter 6.52 of the West Memphis Municipal Code regarding inoperable motor vehicles and for other purposes.
Would you read the title to 06?
An ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at 500 West Broadway, Suite Number 3, permitting an indoor storage facility in a C1 general commercial district.
That concludes the title to 06. Moving on, the next item on our agenda is the lease on the Roberta Jackson Center. We discussed that in pre-council. I believe you have a motion to...
I'll make a motion and we table it.
Second.
Have a motion and then second to table. All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is tabled. It'll be on the next agenda.
So, would it be another work session down there?
I would think so.
Talk about a work session.
We'll have another work session on it, but I have no idea. I guess next week, say next Tuesday.
Set it and we'll try to get...
Say in the evening, say we had last four o'clock. Is that all right?
Next Tuesday at four?
Ms. Robinson, I didn't want to interfere with your work, your schoolwork. That four be okay?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm going to be on.
Four o'clock Tuesday.
Okay. Next item, I believe, on our agenda is permission to distribute Southland Funds. There are two on the agenda and I believe there are two that Frank will be adding.
Three.
Three that Frank will be adding. Frank, will you go over what you will be adding plus what's on the agenda?
Yeah, I was going to make a motion to add the two. The agenda goes up to three.
Second.
All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, we do have, we do have five requests to add. Mr. Pulliam is $500 to River Church, $500 to Bethel AME Church, $259.70 to Eccleman Village, and $259.70 to Angler Court. We have Ms. Hutchinson wants to add $1,000 to the Academies of West Memphis for prom, promise, pledges. Mr. Cat wants to add $500 to the Critney County Boys and Girls Club and Ms. Robinson wants to add $1,500 to the 15th Street Church of God in Christ, $300 to Brewer's Academy, $200 to Wonder City Boys Club, and $200 to L.L. Jackson Girls Club. And Mr. McLendon wants to add $269.40 to Critney County Boys and Girls Club, $750 to Deer, $500 to L.L. Jackson Girls Club, and Mr. Holt wants to add $1,519.40 to the Missouri Street Church of God in Christ for the youth, and all of these do qualify.
Sir, excuse me. I was waiting for the River Church to get me their information so I could give them a contribution as well, but I guess since Councilman Pulliam has already donated, I'm going to go ahead and give the remaining, with council approval, the mating 31804 of my contributions to the River Church.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Martin, as well, with council approval, I had 12 students instead of 10, so could that be 1,200 as opposed to 1,000?
Seven thousand, okay.
Yeah, I had a...
I may if we accept the...
1,200 instead of 1,000, I'm sorry.
I may if we accept the presentation.
This is a motion to accept the distributions as amended. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir.
And a second?
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the distributions will be made. Next, I need permission to sign a contract with the planning and design that we discussed at length.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Does that, approval for the distribution of funds, does that cover mine too? Because you didn't...
Yes, yes, it was on the agenda.
Okay.
That was already there. Planning, commission, recommendation in your packet. We have a motion and second to accept them.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they will accept them. Moving into committee reports, I'll start down here to my right. Willis.
No.
Alderman, Mundy.
No.
Wayne.
No. Yes, sir. The Personnel Committee...
Personnel?
Yes, sir. Personnel Committee met very briefly. Let me find my notes. Okay, I'm sorry. Personnel Committee meeting met yesterday. We briefly talked, did some updates with what we were already in discussion concerning our personnel manual. We're in the process of trying to update some of the requirements and things that are currently in there. That was a thorough discussion. Ongoing communication concerning our catastrophic leave policy that we are trying to implement. Communications Coordinator introduction. Very, very excited to be introduced to Mr. Nick Coulter, our new Communications Coordinator. He gave a very, very great introduction of himself and his plans in terms of what he's wanting to do. Did you all get a chance to talk with him in pre-council? Somebody say something? No?
Stand up.
Nick, can you stand up real quickly? If you're here, let me put my glasses on. Yeah, so, again, you'll be seeing a lot of him and thank you very much for your input on yesterday. We were excited about that. Ms. Tawana Bailey, our current community outreach development person, gave her input and ongoing things that they're working with at the Police Department in reference to the Personnel Committee and things that they're looking at for the police officers, and that is pretty much it. The last, the last thing I did want to announce coming from the Personnel Committee was our job fair that will be held on the 16th at the Eugene Wood Civic Center in collaboration with the Arkansas Workforce Center. Again, May 16th from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, so we encourage everyone to come out and share that information. And that, sir, concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Loraine?
Yes, sir. I'm reporting for the Airport Commission meeting that was held Thursday, April 19th. I was out of commission for both council meeting and the commission meeting on that day. Some of the things that I have in here, I talked with Airport this morning, they've been resolved already, but it's one thing I want to report is that the contract with our current engineering firm is up, but after much thoughtful consideration, the Commission voted and selected Gover Engineering Firm as our new engineer for this particular year. That is my report.
Jane, Tracy. Ramona, Jane. Ramona.
Yes, sir. Public Works met this past Tuesday on the South Loop Extension. Pickering's begun the design stages on the Hino Bridge project. The pre-construction meeting with Parsons was held April the 24th. No date has been set for a bridge closing yet, but they are in constant communication with the businesses that would be affected. The job completion date is set for November 20th, 2018. For trash collections, we've had two of four trucks out of service due to mechanical issues in late March and early April, so it's created quite a bit of stress for the sanitation department picking up yard and spring cleaning, but now we have three trucks up and running. They're working overtime to get caught back up. On May the 14th, we'll begin the rehab of the city shop break room bathroom and mechanics lights. Also, on May the 14th, we'll begin raising the foundation at the control building at the main pump station on South Loop Road. For recycling, we had 15,760 pounds recycled last month. There were no e-waste pickups. And I'll defer to Ms. Robinson for Keep West Memphis Beautiful.
Thank you so very, very much, Councilwoman Taylor. May 18th has been the date set, the tentative date set for our Keep, our Big Keep West Memphis Beautiful cleanup blitz along with a tire suite that is supposed to be going on in the city. Haven't announced a date as yet. And also on Saturday, May 5th, Wonder Junior High School will, one of their teams will be cleaning up West Memphis as our kickoff cleanup celebration. It is a celebration. So, that pretty well ends my report. Hopefully more later.
And then I'll move on to A and P.
A and P.
A and P Commission.
Yes, go ahead.
The tax collections for March were $121,257. The year-to-date collections at the end of March were 1.62% higher than the same date the previous year. For March events, the Civic Center was still closed, but it has reopened although the project's not closed out. The auditorium had five events in March with 1,880 visitors. The Commission approved the repairs for the flood damage to the Big River Trail, approved splitting the cost of a Sky Cop at 14th and Broadway with the Main Street Board, approved purchase of a used long bed truck for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, approved the purchase of banners to extend banners the entire length of Broadway East to Martin Luther King Drive. We entered into a discussion with the Economic Development Team in setting up a fast action closing fund for tourism businesses. We reviewed the possible sites for welcome signs at the north entrance to the city on I-55 and the west entrance on I-40. We accepted the resignation of Dr. G.W. Sarles to the Commission and voted to add Dr. Scott Ferguson, one of the new owners of the Holiday Inn Express, adding him to the Commission. This vote requires approval of the Council, so I would make that motion that Dr. Scott Ferguson be added to the Advertising and Promotion Commission.
Any discussion?
Well, I think Dr. Ferguson will make a good member of the board. I mean, he served as state rep before, you know, and he has really, you know, done a lot of things in the community for his, you know, I say economic development because of some of the things that, you know, property and things that he's had and just did. Other words, for his contribution, you know, city dollars because of the tax that we get from some of the things that he's doing, and I think he would be an excellent member.
And as our custom, his application was in your packet.
May I ask a question on that? Didn't he, don't he supposed to have something, be with a hotel, with restaurants or something?
That's what she is saying.
Yes, on the application, it notes he is the owner, or an owner, of the Holiday Inn Express.
Express, okay.
Yes, sir.
He bought the new one.
Oh, he, that's the new, that's the one with just built.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Any additional discussion?
I've got one question and it's about something that Councilperson Taylor said about our breakdowns on the equipment over at sanitation. Do we track or do we have a Pareto set up so that we can kind of predict some of these breakdowns or...
Could we come back to that?
We haven't voted on a motion on the floor.
But I'll be glad to answer the question if we finish that.
We have a motion and a second on the floor to appoint Dr. Ferguson, all, and we've had general discussion on it. Shall he be appointed? And I have a vote on it. All in favor by aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
He is appointed now. Let's get back.
All right, now I'd like to finish my report. Now, I'd like to ask Jim Jackson with the Convention and Visitors Bureau Director to provide an update on the Explorer Bike Share, and maybe you want Mr. Coulter to step up with you, our new...
Sure. Just wanted to let everybody know that we are participating, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, A and P, in the Bike Share Program with Memphis. They're going to have 60 stations around the region, 600 bikes. We're going to have two in West Memphis, one at the Trailhead across from Poncho's and one on the Arkansas landing of the Big River Crossing there on Dacus Lake Road. Installing that one today, I have to thank Amanda and the Street Department for working with us. They poured concrete yesterday for the pad for the bike station at the Trailhead by Poncho's. They're going to install that one on Wednesday of next week. They're going to have an official rollout of these 600 bikes on May 23rd. I don't know an exact time yet. They are looking for volunteers, for people who want to ride a bike from downtown Memphis to both the Arkansas side of the Big River Crossing and to the Trailhead at Poncho's. Philip Perez recruited a couple of people. I think Mr. Rec down here is going to work with us a little bit, although he won't return my text, but that's okay. I see him, I'm standing behind him. But if any of y'all want to, want to ride a bike, let me know.
I will if the mayor will.
You say?
You will if the mayor will. I will.
But seriously, please contact me after this meeting and let me know for sure, because this is a, what they're doing is asking dignitaries, officials from all of the different regions of Memphis and West Memphis, and we need several people to ride bikes back over. We're going to have, start off with 20 bikes, 10 and 10, over on the Arkansas side.
Now, when will this be?
Let me know if you want to do it.
I know, but May 23rd. I need to be like the Tin Man, a Wizard of Oz, and take my oil can with me.
All right, and I understand that. Now, they have also made the offer, if, if you don't want to do that or can't do it for whatever reason, they would bring a fleet of bikes over here specifically for the City Council to take a look at and our commission, since the commission's actually funding some of this. And if we're interested in doing that, everybody could dress appropriately and be prepared for that. Probably could do that in the parking lot at the Civic Center so we're all safe and all, but that's something that has been offered to us as well. But for sure, they're going to roll this out on May 23rd and let me know if you're interested. We've got about eight or 10 people that are already ready to do it and we need, we need a few more, eight or, six or eight more.
Could you tell the time again?
Ma'am?
The time again?
Don't know for sure.
Oh.
They're going to have the grand ribbon cutting, grand opening, and then kind of disperse from there, and I don't think they've announced the time for sure.
Jim, how does these stations work? I mean, how do you, do you have a credit card, a debit card?
Well, we're going to have two different types of machines here, kiosks. We're going to have one that, yeah, it's an ATM. You can walk up to it with a credit card, or if you're a member of the Bike Share Program, you have your, your membership card, and, and you swipe your card and it gives you, it magnifies, activates a card that you then take up to this bicycle that has a LED screen that's solar powered, and when you, when you have your card, it unlocks the bike. They have built-in locks, built into the pedestals. So, it removes the lock, you remove it, it unlocks it, you remove it, and it has a self-storing area there on the bike. There's also a lot of promotional opportunity on the bike, on the baskets, on the fenders of the bike, on the GPS itself. Ultimately, if a business, say Poncho's, wanted to buy commercial on there, this GPS would pop up and say, "World Famous Cheese Dip 500 Feet Ahead." And, of course, anybody that wants to pay for that could do that.
What are the, what are the fees for this?
$4.
Five.
$4 an hour. You can buy, there's different levels of memberships too. But I think the, am I, am I right on that?
It's five.
Five?
It's $5 for an hour.
There was talk of four and five. I think that's like the most expensive. But there's going to be ultimately, well, there'll be 600. They could all end up at, say Shelby Farms. They're going to have a, they've got, part of the organization maintains them and redistributes them if they all ended up in one place or not. Also, that GPS, they know who's rented that bike.
Mm-hmm.
So, if someone wants to take it home, they'll, they know where that bike is, so...
And just charge their credit card.
Yeah, yeah, and they got your credit card, and, and then if someone took the bike from someone who else who had paid for it, they still are going to know where that bike is So, we're excited about that, and I know we're, we're, we're a little over on pre-council, but it was interesting what y'all were talking about, and I'm very proud and I'm glad Ms. Hutchinson there had mentioned Nick here. Nick has come on board as our Communications Director for the city, and I think that with the projects that Philip and Paul were talking about, I think we're on a good roll here to start talking about the virtues of West Memphis, both as Nick likes to say internally and externally to people who are visiting and people who live here. We've already started the process, obviously, by hiring a qualified Communications Director by, and I'll go ahead and tell you this, it's, it's official, we have a new city's website will be westmemphisar.gov. We will have a .gov website and, which is pretty common for municipalities and counties to have that, so we're excited about that. So, we're going to have a one-stop shop ultimately where all of our visitors and citizens can go to find out about West Memphis, how to do business in West Memphis, codes, agendas, past minutes from public meetings. Hopefully, we'll have everything available at one site on the Internet that people can find out everything they need to know about West Memphis. So, and Nick, we're pleased to have him involved in it, and he's a, we, we're hitting him hard already for sure. So, I do appreciate, any questions for, about A and P or anything we're doing? I will tell you too, we are updating Channel 17 and maybe by your next meeting, it may not be, and Joe's working on it back here. We've got some new equipment we're going to have in here. We're going to have a second camera up here so that we can see who's up here talking and the audience, and we can do it, Joe will be basically the producer back there and can switch from, from camera to camera. Some new switching equipment and some new scheduling equipment for Channel 17. We're kind of, right now, we have to do it manually and Joe literally has to sit there and switch, but we have purchased some, some new equipment that's going to make Channel 17 much more efficient and another avenue that we can get this information that we want to get out to the public. So, we're excited about that. So, we'll hopefully have that done. The equipment's in, we're working on an install date, so next meeting or two, we should have some new equipment in here.
I think this is very good because this gave us an opportunity to tell our story because there's a lot of good things that's going on in West Memphis that people don't get an opportunity to know about, so this would enhance, you know?
Absolutely.
I think it's a good thing.
Yes, it is. Any, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
That concludes my A and P report. If I might, I'll back up to Public Works to respond to Mr. Crum's question and ask Ms. Hicks, the City Engineer, who is more knowledgeable of the day-to-day operations than I am.
Yes, we have a maintenance schedule for our trucks. The issues that we have had with our trucks were unexpected. It is each driver's responsibility to notify our mechanic when things are going wrong or having issues, if there's funny noises, anything of that nature. Unfortunately, we just had some major parts break down, but it was unpredictable. When I say major parts, it's not like they did the radiator fluid in or checked the oil or, you know, go around do their bike inspection or post, or pre-emplacement, which is about axles cracking, stuff like that. So, and that's a combination of wear and tear on the trucks, the age of the trucks, the one for the land wheel, we've had some issues with that, we're working with the county on that. And what it really was that falls down to is the age of trucks. We haven't bought a new trash grabber, truck, Derek Paul truck in a while.
Do we know how much money we spent last year on maintenance? Just the ballpark?
That's what we're on, the way it says...
Just the ballpark?
That's what we're working on. The way it's set up is you can't, because there's three different departments, basically in sanitation, there's a rear end loader, there's a front end loader, which is a dumpster, and then there's a gratter truck. And technically, when those repairs are made, because a lot of stuff we do is in-house, but some of the stuff we do have to send out, and because vehicles have to be regenerated that decent ones do, they're not all put under each category budget. So actually, I'm working with Frank and some other things to figure out how much we're actually spending out compared to how much is coming in for each of those sanitation.
Frank, do you have any idea how much we're spending, just in general in maintenance?
Under the repairs last year, it was all done in one lump sum between sanitation, between the three departments. We're trying to separate that this year to keep a better...
How much was that?
I don't have, I didn't have it in front of me, but it was on the printout of the total repairs, but that would include sanitation, dumpsters, and trash vehicles. Now, from a reporting standpoint, what Rex kept in the shop, I'm not aware of at all. But we did talk to Amanda, we do need to start separating the repairs.
We don't have an idea of a total?
Oh, I have a total.
Huh?
I have a total.
What's the total?
That was a printout from last year. I don't have that.
Guess at it?
No, I don't want to.
Perhaps you would like to attend the next Public Works meeting? We'll be glad to go into this in depth. We met the first Tuesday of each month at noon. We'd be delighted to have you.
I'm on top of that.
I can meet with the outdoors and I might...
That a word? I was just curious if we're doing anything proactive to get the maintenance costs down, that keep the trucks more reliable?
We are, and once we actually separate those costs and exactly find out which ones cost us more, we'll know direction to turn, because it's such a large, raw category. We're carrying dumpsters, three different types of trucks in sanitation, and then of course you have streets, we were also in that, and then with their day-to-day pickup trucks.
Well, Amanda, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I'll meet with you later, if you don't mind. Okay.
That concludes my reports, Mayor.
Does that conclude all of the reports? Jane?
I got one thing that I would like to mention. Of course, yesterday, we know we had our Public Safety Advisory meeting in Little Rock yesterday, and I gave everyone a copy of this Resolution Number 17, which we had a length of meeting, and I'm not going through all this. But one thing that I pulled out for everyone to take a look at, of course, you know, our Fire Department, when they go outside of the city of West Memphis, state law, as it's written now, they can only charge like $200. So all the, and people that, all the different committees that endorse this, so they're trying to put it before the legislature so they could change, change it, change the law, whereas that we could get reimbursed for total costs. And so this is one of the things. I have a few more in here that I was going to pull out, but I didn't get a chance to, but it's very thick, and the meeting was very lengthy, but I know this is one of the things that, you know, I think we all will be glad of. So when the Fire Department go outside, because anyone receiving that act first three months, you know, they have to go outside and set a limit. So now, when they go outside and set a limit, if it passes, then we'll be able to collect, you know, the, you know, total amount, you know, cost.
Mayor, I'm going to be real quick. I just want to acknowledge Todd in the Utility Department, as well as AJ in the Sanitation Department for addressing some important issues for me. I appreciate them for doing that. As well, I just want to acknowledge this report, who does this report actually goes to? Would it be you tracing the budget or something the mayor needed?
So which part are you referring to?
This part.
Park mission. Like I say, I will present it to the Budget Committee for something on there that you're needing, yes. I just got it today, so I didn't read it yet.
Okay. I just want to acknowledge that we did get...
Are you talking about the report from the park?
Yes, sir.
It was handed to me just before the meeting.
Well, let me ask this one question, of course, I know the Utility Department, we're in the middle of them coming back with their, you know, particular budget, from time to force increase. So, I mean, we just waiting on them? Will we, could we do anyone else? I'm just saying, look at anyone else's proposal?
I haven't received any.
I know HR is working on the next set. We did not have budget meeting last week. Both of us, I believe, were out of pocket. I'll be calling her today and find out when she wants to schedule that meeting, instead of waiting until the fourth Thursday of April, May, excuse me, we can go ahead and maybe move that up. But she has always been working towards that same goal that we established.
I received a call late yesterday from the Arkansas Highway Department, and I'm fixing to pass it on as general information. They're fixing to close, be some lane closures in West Memphis, and they called me yesterday from the Travel Center over on the interstate on the service road going west to the first red light will be down to one lane. It'll also go under the bridge where the lights, we've had so much controversy, are. They'll be doing some work under there, and one lane of that will be closed over to the front of Walgreens. And they're asking that AFCO Road be the only lane open, closed for all the traffic out of Lake Shore, rerouted to the AFCO Road over to 77. And the good part about it is, it'll only go be in effect Sunday, this Sunday, from 10:00 at night to 5:00 in the morning. So that saves them...
I thought you were going to say months.
No, it's the amount of repairs they're doing, and the road will be closed from 10:00 to 5:00. So I don't think that at that time it'd create a whole lot of chaos. I have not gotten approval from the sheriff yet, I have not heard from him, but I told him that he'd have to approve it going down in front of the jail. But the other will be, I'm repeating myself, and I know it, from the Travel Center west to the first red light will be one lane. Under the bridge will be one lane, over to in front of Walgreens, but they couldn't tell me exactly how far it would go down in front of Walgreens. And then all the traffic out of Lake Shore will be rerouted to AFCO Road to 77.
Mayor, that's just for one night?
Just one night, Sunday night from 10:00 to 5:00. Shouldn't, I don't think it'd be a big problem. We've got to notify the Fire Departments and the ambulances and all of those. Any other announcements?
Yes, Mayor, the Committee for the Neighborhood Center, Ward 2 and Ward 5, can I see y'all for about five minutes in the back, real quick? Thank you.
Did y'all hear that? In here, Willis, or in the...
In the, just outside the council room.
Okay. Any other announcements?
Cindy has...
Yeah, I, the council members with emails were, I notified, the rest of you, I just wanted to see if you could stay after council and meet to, in regards to the new, adopting the new code and the fee ordinance that has to be adopted when we adopt the new code. Just to go over some of those things and ask any questions that you might have, and it shouldn't last too long.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yeah?
I got one more thing I wanted to add. I just want to, I want to ask this council to keep Officer Johnson and his family in your prayers. I know the young man, he was working for Ford City. He was getting ready to start to ask to work for our police department here in West Memphis, and, you know, he lost his life tragedy last Saturday, and I just want you to keep his family and his fiancee in your prayers.
Do you have any information on services?
Not yet. His uncle going to call, supposed to call me today and let me know what they decided, but I'll let you know soon as I find out, I'll let all you all know.
Anything else?
Motion, John.
Make a motion for recess.
All in favor by aye?
I'll second his recess motion.
Till 6:00?
Till 6:00.
All in favor by aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We're recessed.